Good evening, welcome to Columbia Heights Public Schools Independent School District, number thirteen, school board meeting for Tuesday, October ninth, two thousand and eighteen. I'd like to call the meeting into order and ask you to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you again, and welcome. Holla, if you would, please call the roll.
Louis, here. Larkin?
Here.
Severson?
Here.
Mueller?
Palmer?
Here.
Asamari?
Here.
And Superintendent Kelly?
Here.
Thank you. Read our mission statement. Columbia Heights Public Schools create worlds of opportunity for every learner in partnership with supportive small-town communities by challenging all to discover their talents, unleash their potential, and develop tools for lifelong success. Our core values are community, excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, courage, and innovation. Next up would be the agenda approval, adjustments, announcements, and correspondence. First would be to approve the agenda. If I get a motion to move that forward, please.
So moved.
Molly?
Second.
Natty? Any discussion? Hearing none, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Announcements, on October sixteenth at five PM, there will be a school board listening session in the Family Center. Also on the sixteenth at five thirty, there'll be a school board work session. October seventeenth, there'll be no school, it's a district in-service day. October eighteenth and nineteenth, no school. October twenty-third, which is a Tuesday, at seven PM, there'll be a school board meeting. November sixth is a Tuesday, and it's election day. November thirteenth, at five PM, there'll be a subcommittee on policy meeting. And then also on the thirteenth, at seven PM, there'll be a regular school board meeting. Correspondence, Superintendent Kelly, any correspondence this evening?
Mr. Chair and members, there's no superintendents at this time.
Thank you. Communication to the board. Citizen and employee representatives, at this time, any citizen or employee may briefly address the school board. The board will listen to brief remarks, ask clarifying questions, and if desired, request that the administration follow up. The board will not take action at this meeting on requests presented at this time. Communication to the board. Okay. There's none, so we'll move on to the consent agenda, which includes the personnel report, lane changes, minutes of the September eleventh and twenty-fifth school board meetings, and the September eighteenth work session. Motion to move that forward, please.
So moved.
Natty?
Second.
And Molly? Any discussion on the consent agenda? Hearing none, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Next up would be discussion, reports and information. Start with reports from members of the board. Board members will report on board activities since the last regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Education. Are you prepared to start?
Sure. I was just trying to think back. I remember vividly homecoming, it was a fun, kind of filled week, a lot of different things going on. I was able to make it to a few things, particularly the tailgate before the game, and then the football game itself, and it was fun to see a lot of students visiting and all the different people that were honored over the course of the week. So it was fun to be a part of that. I also attended a chair meeting just before this meeting and a policy subcommittee meeting.
Okay.
I think, I think that's it.
Okay. Thank you. Laura?
Well, I'm thinking back here. I believe since the last board meeting I attended, I did miss the last one, and I do apologize for that. I believe it was a work-study session, nine sixteen board meeting, also the subcommittee on policy just prior to this meeting, and then many conversations.
Okay. Thank you. Holla?
I attended the candidate forum and the policy subcommittee meeting right before this.
Thanks, Molly.
Yes, I had a meeting with Superintendent Kathy Kelly, thank you very much. I also attended the homecoming coronation, homecoming football game, and fireworks, and just a thank you to everyone that donates to make those possible. That is a really exciting thing that our school district does, and I appreciate it. I also attended some adapted soccer games, JV football games, the school board candidate forum last night, and I've had lots and lots of conversations with community members. Thank you.
Thank you. I attended a couple of the district-sponsored information tours for the bond, actually all three of those, two of them were here and one was at North Park, very informative. Thank you for everybody that came out to actually ask some questions and take the time to learn about what's coming up. I was at a chair meeting prior to this, and then, I know I've had lots of conversations, but I don't recall doing anything else, so that would conclude my report. Superintendent Kelly, do you have a report?
Mr. Chair and members, yes, I do, surprise. As Chair Larkin has just mentioned, I have been involved with multiple bond meetings and tours regarding the referendum that's coming up, and I too would like to thank the community members and the parents and the school board members and the staff who attended these meetings to become more aware of what the questions were all about. Attended the homecoming activities, and I just want to say the coronation was so well-done, and the young, the young folks looked so formal in their attire, and I'm hoping that their rein was an enjoyable one for them over homecoming. The pep fest was great, and the homecoming and fireworks was also great. They were, they made, it was really a high point of the week for me, so hats off to all involved, because homecoming just doesn't happen on its own, it takes a lot of people, and so all of those that were involved, thank you. I would like to publicly thank social studies teacher Erin Edwards and Stern, who actually wrote the Hamilton Foundation and got a grant through the Foundation for all the students in the eleventh grade class to study about Hamilton, and then to have a day-long adventure down in Minneapolis, to meet the artists, to present their presentations, to perform a little, and then to see the Broadway production of Hamilton. It took twenty-nine chaperones, it took a lot of reconfiguring of the day to support the students that were there that were not going, and so I truly believe that Erin and the high school staff, district staff, and Principal Dan Robleski went above and beyond to get those kids down there, and I think it was a great experience and many memories were made, so thanks for, for that. It was just, I wish I could have gone, but I'm really happy for those that did. I had an occasion to stop down to the swim meet, and it was really great to see the pool up and running again, and I'm sure if Loriann were here, she would be, you know, nodding her head in approval. But it also struck me that there's a lot of parents that are there on a routine basis that are selling the tickets, that are supporting the team, and I wanted to be sure they're selling food and fundraising for the athletes in that area, and I wanted to just reach out and tell them that they're appreciated too. The E-12 admin team had its monthly meeting, and then the Executive Director of Educational Services, Xenus Denvik, and I had the good fortune to attend the Minnesota Community Education Association's conference luncheon for Director Kristin Stunkel. And there she was honored and received the Community Leaders of Excellence Award, so congratulations to Kristin on that, and we were very honored to attend, and I'm so proud of the work that she's doing in this district, and it was nice that she was recognized statewide. I attended the AMSD Board of Directors meeting where the policy platforms were discussed, a big one again this year, and I know many of you had mentioned this, and last night was special education cross-subsidy funding. And so there are senate committees that are working on this right now, policy committees, and AMSD is once again putting forth a push, and if there were members of school districts that wanted to go down and talk about this at a policy level, we can, and so I've asked Dr. Fry to see if, if he thought that he might want to go down, and so, but that was going on. Right after that, the North Suburban Post Secondary Success Consortium met, and it was a full meeting, so we had not only the superintendents, but we had all the subcommittees. And so we met to begin our work in the area of higher education, Avid, college and career readiness, hiring practices, and for a diverse workforce, and the superintendents met and everybody reported out. And one of the things that, there's some really good work that is going to evolve free of charge, because everybody, there's no middle person in here, there's a lot of collaboration going on, but some of the things that the superintendents also discussed about was school safety and resource sharing and summer academy, and the possibility, the real possibility of starting to share staff for specialty classes between and among the districts. And one of the things that was most intriguing to me was that in a neighboring district not far away, Roseville, they would like to run Arabic classes, and they don't have enough for a full-time teacher, and we have always wanted to do that. And so we thought, you know what, we'll have to look where we are in staffing, but it might be that we might be able to buy a little bit of time from them. And so that's just an example of some of the things that are going on in those meetings, and so we look forward to see where that all winds up. I had my first official meeting with the Metro Exu Executive Director, Julie Frame, since I'm going to sit on that board for a year at the executive committee level, and so she gave my orientation, and I have my first, I have my first meeting coming up here in November. I attended the Columbia Heights Boosters Hall of Fame Dinner again this year, and every year I go, it's such a great event, just love it, and it was very well-attended, because we were honoring the girls volleyball team from nineteen ninety, and Al Agdi was there again. If you don't know Al Agdi, he taught here many years, and he's the emcee, and he did an outstanding job, and it was great getting to know some of the women now from that volleyball era and their parents. What an outstanding group of athletes we had then and now. And there'll be, we really talked about having maybe some of them come back and talk to our students, because they've had such interesting pathways. And then a special shout-out to Kay and Gary Mayer, because without them, I don't think the whole thing would be possible, the booster support, but it's, I really feel like they're the engines that drive it every year, so special thanks to them. And finally, I attended the regular school board meetings, the policy meetings, the chair meetings, and had multiple meetings with some of the board members, and I enjoyed all of that, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Let's take the liberty and walk back for just a second, because I saw Natty do the same thing when Holla mentioned she'd been at the candidate forum, and I was as well, and it's not for recognition of me, but to take the opportunity to say thank you to the people that came out, again, to take the time to learn about the candidates, and, you know, thank the candidates. There were some really difficult questions, and I feel like some of the candidates did a really nice job of responding to those questions, both honestly, you know, and it just, it was, it would, they don't envy anybody that sits up there, and I appreciate the fact that everyone did the job that they did, so.
And thanks to Local 710 for sponsoring the event.
And to our moderator as well. I too was there.
Bill Hugo.
And it was very well-run, and it was very informative, so thanks to all.
Anybody else want to throw something off that they remembered since I kind of cheated and went back on that one, so, all right, we'll keep moving forward then. Next up would be the building vision card for Columbia Academy.
Chair Larkin, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly, Principal Burkus and I are here this evening to present to you the vision card for Columbia Academy. Of course, our mission is to create worlds of opportunity for every learner, and this presentation will encompass all of our core values of community, excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, courage, and innovation. This is an informational presentation, so we will not be back at an upcoming school board member for governance, since the strategic vision cards were already approved through governance. So we're going to dive right in with Principal Burkus.
Okay. Thank you. Superintendent Kelly, Chair Larkin, members of the board, pleased to be here tonight to talk about Columbia Academy. We are a little bit down from last year in terms of our total enrollment. One thing to keep in mind, we are closed, though, to open enrollment since about this time last year, just a little bit later than this last year, so we had hoped to hit about that seven hundred and fifty mark. We know that with our mobility and being closed to open enrollment, that there is, there's going to be, there's going to be fewer kids. So we're pleased to hit seven fifty with that. I think that was a healthy mark for us. We hope that we can continue to hold that through the school year. But I think that in talking to the placement center, if we had been opened, we would have seen more than fifty additional students, so we would have been well over, I believe, the eight hundred mark if we were open. Being closed, though, has allowed us to really work with the students that have been with us for a while, students that we know coming up through our schools. It's been good, I think, for our school to be able to really serve the kids that are there, and we know that we have lots of kids that need lots of attention, and so we're pleased with this mark at this point. I think that it's, it's a healthy place to be, given that we're closed. We continue to be a very diverse building, as you can see, very similar to other buildings in the district in our diversity, as well as in our special populations, not really much difference between us and other schools in our district. And then our scorecard, which just, again, I know we've talked about test scores already, but there are some other things here in terms of articulated, standards-based curriculum, that is what we expect, so we are, I think, well, yeah, ninety percent, we are at vision there. As far as using the PLCs with the four questions this year, especially with that being an emphasis from the Office of Teaching and Learning, we have, have all of our departments working with the PLCs, and that is a big part of our school now. So formative assessments are often as used as part of that, as far as finding our data to inform our instruction, so it's an area I do feel we're doing fairly well in, but room for growth always in that, as more and more departments get used to the PLC model. Effective teaching strategies, again, I think that as I walk through our building, I'm always pleased to see the, the high level of teaching that goes on consistently across our building, and I think that that does include the use of technology. This year is the first year that we don't have tablets anymore, so we're all Chromebooks, which has been nice, it's really made us more efficient as a building. Percentage evaluated staff at the basic proficient for non-tenured and proficient to distinguished level for tenured, again, that eighty percent of all teachers, we're higher than that, that, every year there's some, but we, I feel have a great teaching. I've never been as excited as I am this year at the teachers that we have at Columbia Tiered interventions, I will talk more about this, but we do have tiered interventions now for both reading and math, and in a pretty substantive way, so I'll talk about that more in a moment. We also have much more going on with our behavior, and I'll talk about that as well. And then, of course, with STEAM or with engineering, we do have our project Lead the Way Now, which we are using, and we're excited about that. As far as test scores go, again, we have room to grow, room to improve, and we did move up this year, we did hit higher marks in our proficiency levels, but as you can see, we still are not anywhere near where we want to be, where we will be at some point, but we, we did see growth again this year, and a reduction in our achievement gap, which is pleasing for us. But in all of our core areas, we, we still have a major challenge, and that is to see how we can move against the, the trend that is out there in our society so strongly, it's so hard to, to, to move that, and we're pushing very hard to see if we can do much more this year, and again, I'll talk more about that in a moment. But with that, this year, we did not quite reach our five percent increase goal, but we were close in both reading and science, and our goal is, again, to make that a goal. We believe that is a reasonable, but a, a good goal for us. It will force us to do good work. And then the other is kind of the other direction, but that twenty-five reduction, percent reduction in our school suspensions and referrals, and those are two separate measures, but in both of those, we hope that we can do that through not just not suspending or not referring, but through improved behavior. So just to move on and to go a little bit deeper, our vision over the last three years is to, has been to create a culture of academics. Our belief is that once you have a culture of academics, everything else will fall into place. As long as you don't, you will be fighting upstream, and so that is our goal. And with that, if it's okay with you tonight, I thought I'd take a slightly different way of organizing it, and really talk more about, so what's been our guiding principles? How are we making our decisions? What are we valuing? What are we seeing as absolutely important to the process that we have for improvement? And so we're going, and I'll go through these one by one, so, but you can see there that there is a list, looks like, I didn't count, but I think it's about eight things, seven to eight things that we are looking at as extremely important for our building in this process of improvement. So that first one, and you can zip to the next one if you wouldn't mind, thank you, is that evidence-based emphasis on our decision-making. So what do we mean by that? I think there's so many things in education that work. In fact, there's some that say just about everything does, including just getting older, right? Kids grow up, and they, they learn just by that. But there's certain things that work much better than others, that are more powerful. What are those things? And how can we emphasize those so that we're doing more of that, spending more time on the things that have the biggest bang? So some of those things that I just point out real quickly, with instruction, the importance of direct and explicit instruction for students, that especially students who are behind, absolutely essential, that we emphasize formative rather than summative assessment. In other words, MCAs are important, but they really don't teach us anything, so what kinds of assessments help us, help our students to actually learn? And we, we want to emphasize those. Our curriculum, the importance of knowledge, building students' knowledge, and so there's so many things that kids need these days, but without a strong knowledge base, not much else is going to happen. And so really emphasizing that in our curriculum. Behavior, we talk about it as authoritative, as opposed to authoritarian, which means basically that we're trying to be warm and demanding at the same time. And then focus, the importance of focus, and basically by that we mean that that sustained effort, that kids are working hard every day and not distracted by a million different things. So the other piece, the second principle for us was teamwork, and ways that we are emphasizing that. We have changed our schedule to provide common prep for our teachers. In a secondary model, teachers oftentimes become just lone wolves, they do their own work, hardly ever talk to another teacher. That's in part because they're busy all day and they don't have a common prep. So our schedule, thanks to Assistant Principal Osby, has been redone in a way that emphasizes this teamwork. So for example, our English department has the chance to get together by grade level to work as a team, to, our math department, virtually all of our core has time to prepare together. They also have prepare, have time to work as a full team in a professional learning community, so they can come together as an entire department and work together, and that's on a weekly basis, so that the common prep in the professional learning communities take place. The school-wide literacy is another way that we are emphasizing teamwork. Everybody is a teacher of, of reading, we say, of reading and writing, so we are not just letting that become the, or be the work of our English teachers. And then, of course, coaching, this year we have literacy coaches and working as teams with their teachers to really become stronger, and really excited about that addition to our staff. But that teamwork also applies to our parents and our students and our staff, so we emphasize our communication, whether that's through our binders and planners, through our grade reports, through our phone calls, or whatever it may be, that working together, being transparent, communicating clearly, sharing that commitment, that together we can raise kids to be, to go a lot further than if we don't work together. So sharing that commitment to that, and then celebrating together, whether that's through Rise Up Breakfast or academic nights. The other big thing I think that we would say is, has been an emphasis for us, guided us in our decision-making, is consistency. So ways that we see that, this year, many of you have kids there, we have now a common syllabus, and the syllabus contains certain items that are the same across all of our classrooms, including our grading process, expectations, those things are going to be the same, no matter which teacher you have, instead of having eight different versions of that, you're, there is one. The things that do change is what are these teachers teaching, but the syllabus is the same. We have five major steps that we take in terms of our behavior, process, what we expect our teachers to do, so that when students go to one classroom to the next, they are seeing a very similar process of greeting, getting going, procedures, the correction of behavior when that arises. So we have that as well, is in behavior. Our literacy strategies, we share certain literacy strategies across the building, one that you might see or hear if you're there is hugs, we're talking about a comprehension strategy that, that we, that we all use. And then, of course, Rise Up is something that is a mantra, and we use that on a daily basis to talk about what we are expecting. That school-wide literacy, then, is another huge piece. We know that literacy is the key to, we think, to future success, so we are working this year in these key areas. We're working on vocabulary, in writing background, building that background knowledge, using multicultural literature, really in a diverse school, how important that is, making sure our students are reading complex nonfiction and not just simplifying text, but making them rise to, to the level of grade-level nonfiction, and then, of course, our literacy coaches. So school-wide literacy is a major emphasis for us, and one that we think is, is very important for a building like ours. This year, we have added math intervention, and really math intervention for us is about a three-year goal, and that is that in three years, sixth graders are going to go from the level they're at to proficiency in algebra. And so how do you get students ready to do well in an algebra class? So everything that we're doing with our math intervention is geared towards building that foundation. So this year, we have been looking at a lot of different things with the University of Minnesota, Dr. Cottin is an expert in intervention in math, and really using cur bases to guide us in terms of decision-making, and then the resource that we are using is called Spring Math, which she worked on with another researcher out of, I believe, who was at the University of Minnesota at one point, and that's called Spring Math. So we are using class-wide interventions as well as small-group interventions, and we will be following the, the protocol of Spring Math to see if we can get our, our teams, our kids to, to the level of proficiency in algebra in three years. So those are specific things, but really, I think, the big thing that we, and this has been true for many years now in Columbia, Columbia Heights as a whole, that we want a rich and rigorous curriculum. That means that we are teaching a rigorous core in science, math, social studies, and English, but then we also are emphasizing the arts, and we have great arts programs there, from our band, to our theater, to our media arts, to our visual arts, our athletics. It's a very busy, every season is very busy at Columbia Academy with students participating in after-school athletics. With the exploration that's possible, we know that that's important at a middle-school level. Some of the big things that, just to, I know many of you heard about, so I won't belabor them, but History Day, engineering, robotics, our marimba band, theater, we have our musical every year, and then our many encore classes. All of that supported by Avid, and with Avid, we really have a structure there to help us support very rigorous programming in that idea that, again, college is the goal, and that with that support, they will be able to reach that. So when I think about So, when I think about Columbia Academy, I, I do think of that sort of, again, rigorous and rich, and the variety of things that take place. With that, though, in the, in the next slide, we do know that kids are, are in a really interesting stage of their life, where they're developing quickly, where they're not always sure what's going on, inside or outside. But, we have tried, I think, to emphasize certain things. One, that there are core values that are essential at this stage in your life and in all phases of life. We chose some of those and put it into our acronym of Rise Up. And we have also added to that then, this, this mantra that it's a place where you belong, and really trying to emphasize that every one of the kids here is a teammate, and that you wear a uniform because you're a teammate, and that's, let's treat each other as teammates. With that, though, we also know that kids make a lot of mistakes in middle school. It's part of growing up. And so, we need to have high expectations that help students learn what, what is the right way to do things. But with those mistakes that arise, we also have to find a way to restore from the discipline or the correction that has been made, from the hurt sometimes that occurs. So, I'm probably as excited about this next bullet point as anything that's going on at the district, at the academy this year. Over the last, I believe now we've been in school almost six weeks, we've conducted over sixty restorative circles, averaging about ten a week of our new dean, Dan Green, who came to us, was trained in this and, and conducted them in his previous school. It is amazing to watch. He's been helping us all learn to be better at it. And the, taking a tense situation, a situation where someone is angry or someone is hurt, and turning that into something that is very positive, and not having to resort to, you know, the toughest discipline always, sometimes we do, but not always. And when we do, that we have a process to bring students back onto the team and feel strong and good again. So, it is a big part of what we're doing this year, and I believe it will be key to us achieving that last bullet point, which is that equity that we want. And that's including behavior and academics. We need to know that we belong. If belonging is the beginning of learning, then restores, restorative practices allow us to bring students back in who feel like maybe they don't belong anymore because of something that has occurred. So, I feel, I feel very strongly that this has been one of our most exciting additions this year to what we are doing at Columbia Academy. So that's us, just a few pictures of us. It's a busy place, full of great kids and amazing teachers. So, thank you.
Any questions?
Want to commend you on the steps you've taken with the restorative circles, restorative practices in general. They make a huge difference.
Yeah. Yeah, it's fun to, fun to see the difference in kids when they walk into the room and when they leave. It's pretty dramatic, yeah.
And it is really important for kids to know that we're not trying to make things painful. We're trying to help them fix it.
Yeah.
Fix whatever damage.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, it's, we're still, most of us are just, are learning as we watch. Dan and our new social worker, Ms. LaJoy, have done the majority of them, and we've mostly been witnesses to it, but learning as we, as we watch, so, yeah.
With the enrollment kind of turning down a little bit to what you call the healthy mark, do we project needing to open enrollment again at any point, or is that just sort of table discussion until we see how the attendance patterns go, or is this a premature question that's not?
I can respond to that, is that, I've talked to Principal Burkus, I'd really like him to stay at around 750, he knows that, but really our capacity rate is 700.
Yep, correct. So we were far over our capacity mark. So you're feeling good about 748, yeah?
Seven hundred is our capacity.
But if we have students from our district, they're not, they're, can be part of that population.
Correct.
Yeah. Yeah, so we're still getting those students, we just enrolled a couple of students this week that, who live in the district, yeah.
So it can grow.
It's only, it's only close, it's only close to.
Open enrollment. Yeah, I guess for everybody to know that, 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 that number, again, number one, 700 is full, but 750 is a goal, and, you know, if, if we see it grow, it's going to be our kids from our district, so.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Great, we never say no to kids in the district.
So if you're listening to this and you're seeing all the great things that are going on at Columbia Academy and your students, our middle school students in our district, go talk to Mr. Burkus.
Absolutely, yes, come visit, we'd love to show you around, we'd love to have you in our school, yeah.
I, we always want better test scores and things like that, and we talk about those things. But the fact that this district in general focuses on, you know, life skills and some of the other things, and we're looking for other ways of measuring how our students are, are doing and how they're growing, I think is important for people to understand. I think it's important to do, and you have personal opinion, but probably, how did you describe it? There's a lot going on inside and outside, and they don't really know, you know, where they're at, and, and you're going to have choices, and I was thinking about that as you're listening, and my first thing is, what were you thinking? I'm guessing they're going to say, I don't know what I was thinking. So, you know, you've got that population that you're, you're working with, and that certainly is a challenge. So, the restorative piece that Holla alluded to is, you know what, choices get made, how do we get you back into and being successful, so.
Yeah, yeah, there's so much that's done impulsively, I think, at that age, and so it's, it's important to learn.
It's done impulsively at an adult age, too, so. And we have, we have less excuses. At least for the kids, it's developmental at that point at their age and things like that, so.
I am married to a middle school teacher, not in this district, and I have, I'm a parent of a middle school student, and I really appreciate the commitment to the consistency. I think the consistency from room to room will really help. And I know that's, obviously, you're working with teachers to refine that consistency and make sure they're executing in the way that you're hoping, but I appreciate the, the move toward consistency, especially at that age when things are so volatile, to have a, a standard expectation for how they're going to be treated and how they should treat other people is probably, is really great, so, thanks.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Anyone else?
I, I just have a comment. I'm, I'm really excited about a lot of these, a lot, all of this, these practices that are being put into effect. I really see some great things happening, and I really look forward to seeing that full three years of extra supports for the reading and, and the math intervention. So, I think that's really going to, I think it's going to show a lot of, a lot of growth. I, I think we'll get the kids there then. Thank you, this really looks amazing.
Yeah, we're, we're hopeful with the, the, been very impressed with what we've learned working with Dr. Cottin and about, you know, the, what, what it takes, what research shows it takes to be successful in algebra. So, it's a long, you know, three years is, is a long time, but it, it's really, when you look at what kids need, it's, it's, you need it to do that. And so, it's, it's ways out there, but I think, I think there's really no shortcuts, you have to set that foundation, and so, we'll, we've started.
Well, and, and having that consistency, and thank you for mentioning that, that consistency that, that removes a lot of the gray areas in there, and it's going to be much easier for these kids who are going through this tremendous change from being in a single classroom with a single teacher, you know, to being in the wider world and getting them ready to go out on their own. So I appreciate that as well. Kids need consistency.
Thank you.
If anybody has anything else, we'll move on to the Columbia Academy Lunchroom Pilot.
Chair Larkin, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly, Principal Burkus and I are here to present the Lunchroom Pilot, which the Columbia Academy staff is calling halftime. So, of course, our district creates worlds of opportunities for every learner, and this, this presentation is always focuses on our core values. What you'll see, and I'll pass it over to Principal Burkus in a moment, is, you just heard about Principal Burkus, the staff, and the rest of the admin team at Columbia Academy, taking a deep look at the schedule in terms of, within that eighty-seven minutes of instruction, how can we focus in on different math interventions? How can we use our time wisely? How can we create a schedule for staff that they can work together during their common prep time? So, they've also taken a look at what had been a span of over two hours of lunchroom busyness. And so, wanted to see how, within the confines of the contracts and the student day, how could they use their time more efficiently and effectively? So with that, Principal Burkus.
Yeah, thank you. Yes, Superintendent Kelly, Chair Larkin, members of the board, I, we do, we do call it halftime now because there's, there's three different pieces to it. It's sixty-five minutes long, it's right at the middle of the day, as you can see, eleven fifteen to twelve twenty. And it includes lunch and what we're calling recess for, and maybe there's a better term, but then, and then advisory or star. And it takes place in, actually, and I'm sorry, I forgot one thing, there, lunchroom, library, library, the classrooms, star classrooms, and then the gym as well. We've divided the entire school into three multi-grade teams, and we've named those Harvard, Yale, and Stanford. And we divided those by their star. So each students, or each teacher has their group, which is either assigned to Harvard, Yale, or Stanford. And then, we have a staggered schedule, basically, of three things, of lunch, recess, and star. And as you, if you look across horizontally, you'll see that it's different for each one, and, so that we can stagger it. So, that's the way we make it work. But the entire school is there, and I think that what we're seeing is a lot of advantages. So, the first thing was, our third block used to be the time we had lunch, and so it was a long block, and every class was interrupted at some point by students getting up, going to lunch, having their lunch, and then coming back and then restarting their class. It was tough to get them restarted, it was sometimes tough to stop them, to, to get, to get kids down there and back, just lots of interruptions to learning. We, with this, we have, we don't have that. We also just have a lot fewer kids in the hallways, lot fewer, we used to have two hours of transitions. So we've cut that in half as well, so we have half as many kids in the hallways at any, you know, we just have very few kids, I should say, in the hallways at all. Our supervision time for administrators, it used to be two hours of all of us, every one of the administrators working that entire time to keep the lunchroom going and the hallways clear. We've cut that in half. We access the library, so in my last conversation with our librarian, Ms. Kopp, just on Monday, just yesterday, she was saying that circulation's way up because kids now have more access, they can go in during this time of the day and, and pick out books, so that was good to hear. We do have time for kids to choose then, to either go to the gym or go to the library. If they want a quieter space, they go to the library. If they want to just release some of that energy, and you can hear it, it takes place in the gym. But we let them do that, it's, we have guidelines for them, but we let them talk when they're there. It has created a time for our social workers and psychologists to meet without pulling kids from class, which is nice. It's hard when you're pulling kids from some classes. In the past, we used to start lunch at about the same time, and we wouldn't finish until after one o'clock in the afternoon. So some kids were just going to lunch at five minutes to one, which is late for a middle schooler who might have eaten their breakfast at, before they came to school at seven AM. So we put it right in the middle of the day, another advantage. We do see opportunities for Harvard, Yale, and Stanford to do some team building and some celebrations together. And then, I think that last one, again, the big advantage again, is going back to that top one and the bottom one, that we think by having this break, our kids are better able to go back and focus. If you think about going to an all-day meeting as adults, if we have an all-day meeting, how much we crave that middle of the day, and not to just have lunch and then jump right back into the meeting. A little bit of space there, I think, has been created to give kids a little bit of break and be able to, to focus better when they get back to, to class.
I'll just reiterate that.
Yeah, sorry.
Another reason this came about was that students were going through the lunch line and eating quite quickly, and then having, you know, fifteen minutes or twenty minutes to kind of sit in the lunchroom and be contained, where this, now they have got academic choices, they have energy break choices that they can go to and, and do different things that way.
So, it is a pilot, though, so we will have criteria for whether or not it's really a success or not. One will be, of course, to ask our students, and that'll be vital. Lunchroom staff as well, our student support team, and teacher feedback, I think we need feedback from all of those. I think it will also be interesting for us as administrators to see what we do. Basically, it's a hundred and seventy-two hours, I guess, right, hour per day that we'll have to do other things, and what, what can we do with that time? Obviously, classroom, being in classrooms would be a good way to spend that. Media center book circulation, I mentioned, number of middle-of-the-day and afternoon referrals, we think they will go down as a result of this. And then, of course, the impact of any team building that we are able to implement, and that could be around grades or leadership connections, so. So there's our teams. We hope that if nothing else, our kids will always know what Harvard, Yale, and Stanford are, and I did have a mom come through the other day and say, well, that's where my son is. And so, it was fun to have connections, but obviously, these are things that we would want our kids to aspire to that college degree.
I'll just reiterate that this evening's presentation is a informational item, and throughout the school year, the data will be collected and we'll bring that, the success criteria back for governance.
Great. Thank you.
Questions or comments?
The circling back with the data was my big question. I mean, it's really, we, we seek innovation, right? That's one of the things we're seeking, and it's fun to see something new tried. You know, you can't predict what is gonna, what's gonna come of it, but it's great to, to try, and it seems like a wise, well-thought-out plan, so, I'm encouraged by that. Also, just a tiny bit of disappointment that you picked Ivy schools and not Big Ten schools. Was there any discussion about picking?
St. Thomas?
Oh, come on.
My tea.
Not the Big Tens?
We, I guess we have, we have Iowa fans and we have Gopher, we try to keep it nice and calm, I guess, by going with the Ivy League.
My kids would have refused to be on the Wisconsin team, so.
Yeah. Anybody else with serious questions? Thank you, it's exciting, be interesting to see how we, what comes back on that, so, thanks, Teme.
Thank you.
You staying there, Xena?
I am.
Next up is Career and Tech Ed update. Xena, Tara?
Chair Larkin, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly, Tara Tucker, our Deputy Director of Teaching and Learning is here this evening to co-present with me information on our career and technical education in Columbia Heights Public Schools. So of course, our mission here is to create worlds of opportunity for every learner, and this presentation will focus on innovation. So, it's the evening of Columbia Academy, we're going to start this presentation with Columbia Academy again. As was mentioned earlier, we have adopted Project Lead the Way, which is a national program and curriculum. We start off with design and modeling engineering, and this is the class where students solve problems. For example, a student with, or a person with a disability or cerebral palsy, how can we design accommodations for that student? That's, that's one of the real-life challenges that they actually do tackle. This year, we've started the new robotics and automation, and next year, we're looking towards that eighth-grade class, we're choosing from a list, I'm, we're leaning towards app design, which I'm excited about, so, which will feed into the high school programs with our computers, so. Project Lead the Way, very exciting in the field of engineering for our students and tapping. Uh, Project Lead the Way, very exciting, um, in the field of engineering for our students, and tapping into that creativity, mathematical skills, critical thinking skills, communication skills, so very exciting.
Good evening, Chair Larkin, Superintendent Kelly, and members of the board. We also want to share the amazing opportunities we have in career and technical education at the high school. Here is a list of the courses that we offer in the high school. We offer courses in many different areas, including business administration, engineering, we have woodworking, family and consumer science. We have a lot of offerings there, and depending on the enrollment, some courses might not run every semester, but students definitely have an opportunity to experience the different areas. One big thing for the high school that we have is a Perkins Grant. It's a federal grant that we receive that helps support our career and technical education programs. The Perkins Grant, um, we're part of a consortium with nine sixteen, so they help us with that piece of it, and really supports the professional development of our teachers. So they're able to participate in the state conference, they're able to participate with other districts in professional development, to meet with other districts and other teachers, to see what's happening all over the area. They also support field trips for our students and resources, so some, an example is up there, that this fall, we, um, Matt Townsend put in a request for a color printer, a digital, digital screen printer, and he received it through the Perkins Grant. We also had the business teacher Jennifer Carroll, who put in a request for new headphones for her class, and brand-new ones that would help, and she received that as well. So the Perkins Grant definitely helps with resources for our schools. We also have a great work-based learning program, which our teacher Scott Rome leads, and in the work-based learning program, they really look at potential jobs, identifying what kind of careers and what paths they want to take. He also helps them experience some of these different workplaces. So through Perkins as well, he was able to go to Medtronic last year and some other places, and they were able to see engineering in action, and what does it take to get there? What are some of the interests that they have, and how would that lead to it?
We also have a program called Genesis Works. This is a program where students, um, who are accepted when, when they apply, um, spend several weeks during the summer in training for career, um, skills, and then come to high school. This is for upper-class students. Um, come to high school part-time for classes, and then work at a major corporation part-time as well. So the students come dressed in their, um, business attire to school, and oftentimes will work at places like Target Corporation and, um, different local businesses like that. So they receive, um, extensive training throughout the summer, and then on-the-job training as they go. SparkY is a, um, local organization. Um, they're working with us through aquaponic systems, so students are designing and engineering and building aquaponic systems, which is a self-contained system where there's fish and plants, and it all feeds into one another and, um, grows. Uh, this summer, however, um, some of our students who participated in the high school SparkY, um, program were hired on, um, through, through SparkY. They were trained, and then they were our, um, junior teachers for our summer program through SparkY. Um, so really exciting connection. This evening, uh, this photo there, you can see there were, um, they got a chance to meet the Minneapolis mayor and present, um, all of the things that they had learned about, um, being an instructor of middle school students, and all of the things that they've, the skills that they've learned, um, through the SparkY program. Strive is another program that our high school students can participate in. This is a program offered, um, in part through the Fridley and Columbia Heights Rotary. Um, and what happens is the Rotarians become mentors for our students. Um, and so you can see they work on things like scholarships, um, and they're, they receive scholarships, and they, um, work with the kids on, um, not just, not only academics in terms of tutoring for schools or mentoring, but also talking about career information.
We also offer an after-school class through four H, youth teaching youth, and the high school students, they learn about nutrition and about cooking, and then they go to our elementary students and teach them. So it's a wonderful opportunity to connect high school students with the elementary students, as well as that learning behind it in terms of the nutrition and the cooking. A great collaboration we have with the consortium with nine sixteen allows our students to participate in nine sixteen programs there as well. We aren't able to offer everything at the high school, so the collaboration with nine sixteen, we're able to allow our students to go to nine sixteen and take classes or join different programs, and potentially earn high school credit and technical college credit. And the next screen shows all of the different courses that nine sixteen offers. So there's quite a few different specific courses that our students are able to participate in. The ones in bold, we currently have students at the high school this semester in those program areas. So in animal science, in cosmetology, in education, auto-dismantling, so some amazing things that they're learning there as well.
So as you can see, we have, uh, focus on core academics, and we also have, uh, robust programs for our career and technical education.
Couple things. Um, I know, I thank you for presenting this information. I know there's been some questions. I mean, brought up, um, Wu Beck, I think was the first, uh, um, candidate for him. There was comments made that there is no, you know, technology or any types of programs that are available, you know, through our district or in the district, and, and recently, had someone say exactly the same thing. I'm like, no, that's not correct. So I'm glad this information is here, and I think we find ways to make sure people understand this, but, so I can better understand it, and I'll talk about the nine sixteen piece. So if I'm a student here and I see programs at nine sixteen, I can go there and take that class. I mean, so if I wanted to learn about auto-mechanics, and that was a course that they offered, welding, and I, you know, I don't remember anything that was on the list, but any one of those courses, I have the opportunity to do that.
So all of those courses are listed in the course catalog, and students register, um, in January. So late December, January, they start looking at the course catalog, and those nine sixteen courses are listed right in the high school course catalog for students and families to see. And, um, that course catalog is also listed on the high school website.
So, uh, so I can take the classes there if there's not.
That's right.
And even within the building, there's also, whether it's woodworking, and I don't know, the one I saw was.
We have business administration, we have mechanical.
We have a plastic slab. AutoCAD.
So the opportunities are there, and I understand here, you know, that's going to be enrollment-based. If you have enough kids that want to take a class, it's going to be there, but let's say I want to take that class, and it's not available, I still have that opportunity through nine sixteen?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Can I add a couple of things? I actually know a little bit about this. Um, one, one of the things that, uh, that we review also over at nine sixteen, when we have these, um, these courses that are, um, that are available through Century College, is, um, there are certain, uh, criteria for being able to offer these courses. There has to be a, um, a need for employment in those areas. Um, and, um, and it has to be, um, uh, there has to also be, um, an interest in participate in these, and I do believe they also have like a college day where you can go and you can spend the, the whole day at the, the campus, and I believe we've actually helped students with that in the past, so.
Right, they get like a little passport, and they learn about the different areas of college, how to register, how to meet with a counselor.
Yeah, and it is college.
Yes.
It is college.
Just one clarifying question, just again with the, I, I think it's really beneficial to have the partnership with nine sixteen, because at a, at a school our size, we can't always offer everything for everybody, so having the availability to offer those things, um, I think is really important. Oftentimes, when we hear nine sixteen, we think of our, of our students who require special education services. So to clarify, any student, regardless of whether or not they would, um, need special education services, can register for these classes through the partnership with nine sixteen.
That is correct.
Thank you.
And they can also apply for scholarships, too.
Yeah, it's a great opportunity to try something that you might, that the students might not have an opportunity to try, to see if they have an aptitude for it, right? In a, in a field maybe unfamiliar to them or their, their upbringing or whatever. That's pretty great.
Yeah, and they, they just, um, actually, um, started a course last year for helping students, um, uh, be able to make decisions on what type of courses they wanted to do based upon their interest that I think sounds very, very interesting. You know, it gives the students, um, an opportunity to say, well, if I learn this, um, what can I actually do? What am I qualified for? And it helps them to, um, to be able to make those decisions based upon where they want to be and where they're at, so, um, I thought, I thought it was really interesting. I was kind of hoping maybe we could do something like that, but we'll have to see. You guys got your plates pretty full already, so.
I know this request is going to get, all you guys are going to benefit from it, but I'd like to, if, and maybe to you, is you had a list of the courses available here in nine sixteen. I don't want to reveal, present it, not, I don't need it. I would just like to have those two pieces of paper somewhere along the way. It can come in. The super-dense update is fine, but just, it'd be a good reference for me to be able to, when I answer some of the questions with people, I can say, here's what we have, and if we don't have it, here's what they can do, so.
If people are interested in, you, you might have said this, but I just want to reiterate it in a question. If people are interested in seeing these classes online, um, seeing these offerings, hearing about what we do have, and kind of the technical and career end of the spectrum in classes, where could they find that on the internet?
So on Columbia Heights High School website, there's, the course catalog is there, is listed there, so they can, they can look through the entire booklet, not only these courses, but all of the courses that are offered.
Great.
Would it be important, though, for the students to access their deans and have those conversations to make sure they're eligible to?
There, the dean of students can answer any question that the student may have.
Yeah, I was just thinking, talking about, you know, as I, as I hear the scuttlebutt about the, um, community, about, you know, what's happening in the schools and what's maybe not happening, I think there could be some misinformation about our cu- career and technical options, and so even if a community member or a grandparent or anybody were interested in reading more, this would, that would be the place they could go to see. But for the kids, obviously, they have access to their deans on a regular basis, yeah, so that's great.
Thank you. I think this was a good presentation. It certainly emphasizes the career part of career and college ready, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Um, we are going to take a five-minute recess and then go into closed session. We'll come back and open, and then we'll close it after that, so. Five minutes done from eight oh three.
Is made for you from them, and.
No.
Okay, are you ready? We're gonna.
Don's going.
Going back into session, um, from our short break, and we are now going to go into a closed session in accordance with Minnesota Statute thirteen D point zero three. The board will meet in a closed session for the item on the agenda for the purpose of discussion, discussing negotiation strategies, so. Uh, the board was updated on negotiation strategies, and we are now going to go back into closed session. In accordance with Minnesota Statute thirteen D point zero five, S D three B, the board will close for attorney-client privileges at eight twenty, oh, Rachel.
And Koetjes stated on the record that the purpose of the attorney-client privilege closure is the pending lawsuits from Lorenz Bus Service Inc. versus I S D thirteen. We have to name the lawsuit in the record.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, and then we'll close.
Should go off. She's not quiet.
Don, you're ready?
I guess not. She's getting up, so. Oh, man, I remember when I was going to put, um.
It's off. Okay, that's what I said. I didn't see any time going.
Okay, we are, I got a thumbs up over there. We are back, uh, from our closed session. It's nine twenty-six PM. Uh, so summary would be that, uh, we were in a closed session, uh, for the purpose of attorney-client privilege, and we are moving on to, um, board topics. There's a bit of anything for board topics.
Just want to remind people, I'm sorry, uh, just want to remind people about the Alumni Scholarship Foundation Dinner that's coming up. Uh, what's the date on that, Mr. Alumni? October twenty-fifth at Jack's Cafe in Minneapolis. It's a really great night with a silent auction. We get to hear from the alumni of distinction, I'm sure, um, meet other people in the community. Uh, would love to see anybody come out to that who would like to participate. Um, you can find the way to register. How, how would we do that, Chair Larkin?
If you actually, Yvonne Padilla's taken the, um, your reservations and your food choices. There's a, a Facebook page. There's a, uh, it's a Columbia Heights High School Alumni Scholarship Foundation Facebook page, so type a lot, but you'll get it, and it'll talk a little bit about, about the details are Thursday, October twenty-fifth. I think they're looking for reservations by October sixteenth, ideally for, um, your reservation and your meal choices, and, uh, but yeah, it is a good time. It's fun. Lots of, lots of, and it's for a good cause. The foundation gave out forty thousand dollars in scholarships last year, so, um, they're, and to our kids, right back here, so, thank you. Anybody else for board topics? We have a next, we will have meetings before, they will, okay. Anybody else? Going once, going twice. We will close the meeting at nine twenty-seven.